Good morning, we'll call the meeting to order for the day. First item on our agenda is approval of today's agenda.
Who to approve the agenda?
Motion second to approve the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh same sign, motion carries. Citizens to be heard, seen none, approved payment of bills and vouchers.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion on a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh same sign, motion carries. Two minutes of the October twentieth and twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen meetings.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion on a second to approve the minutes of the October twentieth and twenty-seventh meetings. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh same sign, motion carries. Veterans Honors Rewards Program. Diane and Kurt, come on up.
Morning.
Good morning.
Well, I think most of this stuff was self-explanatory in the packet, but I wanted to just read a quick press release so that the public can know what we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
Here's a flyer for the local veterans, and we're going to have this up, we have this up in our office, and Kurt is going to have it put in the Legion and V F P P Center in his office. So, the Clay County Recorder and the Clay County Veteran Service Office announces a reward service for veterans. It's a free service that entitles our veterans for discounts and incentives at local businesses. The Clay County Recorder's Office and the Clay County Veteran Service Office in partnership with Fiddler Technologies is excited to announce a new service for our veterans known as Honor Rewards. With Honor Rewards, veterans can sign up at our office, the Veteran Service Office or online, to receive an Honor Rewards card which qualifies them for discounts and incentives at participating businesses in our community. This service is being made available at NOKO to the county and its taxpayers. The software is provided by Fiddler Technologies, it's a software company we already have, and this has been implemented in many states and many counties by Fiddler. They will provide all of the support for this. The veterans will go on and sign up online, or if they can't, we have a manual program, application that they will fill in our offices. We double check to make sure that they are, have their DD two-fourteens recorded in our county. So, it is our job to try to get the businesses in Clay County to help support this program. So, I've already contacted Barnesville and Hitterdall and Holly, so we have those, the names of the businesses, so we have to just get support for others. And there's a little on our county website, which is www.claycountyamn.gov. Right on the very front page, there's a link that you can go to to sign up either the businesses or the veteran. So, I think that's pretty much covers it.
Sounds like a great idea. Do you have any businesses signed up yet, or is it just the beginning of it?
We have two, and they're not local.
Oh.
But, yeah, it's kind of interesting. So, they just must have signed up for some of the southern counties, so they signed up for all of the counties.
Oh, okay.
If you want a haircut in Willmore, Minnesota, and you're a veteran, you can get a ten-dollar haircut.
Oh.
So, yeah, it's pretty cool.
Nice. Well, those things seem to take a little time to establish.
Right, we just started this, so, yeah. It's kind of in conjunction with November.
I would think that we'll see more Minnesota businesses.
I think so, I think so.
Biggest thing is to use the software we already purchased a while ago, so.
Right, it's with our software that we use. They try to do a lot of different things for the community.
Well, that sounds like a great program. Is there any action you need from us?
No, we just wanted to inform you, and just, you know, if you're.
So, if a business calls you, it says, big guy was in there soliciting.
Yeah, okay. We'll know then, we'll know what to do with that.
I'm just protecting your sex.
Well, good, once it gets up and rolling, maybe you can come back and give us an update on how things are going and how many people are getting enrolled, so it's.
It made sense to collaborate together.
Exactly.
Teamwork.
Teamwork, there we go, Kurt.
So, the web, the link is already on our website.
The link is already on our website.
Sometimes with these programs, they're fantastic, but it's hard to get the knowledge out to the public, so.
Right, right, and I've got a smaller, shorter press release that I'm going to try to get into our bigger paper, and then I'm going to send the other press releases to our other county papers.
Great, thank you.
Did you have something, Wes?
Somebody goes on the website, I'm sure one has to verify that he or she is a veteran.
Right.
And how do they do that? I'm just curious.
Part of, part of the form is they have to put their, you know, the military information in, and they have to have the military ID. If they don't have it, then they'd have to contact.
And then that can be cross-referenced each way.
Most of them are asking for their service number, which is on the top of that D D two-fourteen.
Thank you.
I don't know about Fiddler.
It's the D D two-fourteen, that's the key to everything when you're dealing with veterans.
When you're talking shop, you just whip it out of your pocket.
Yeah, I would just suggest maybe, I like the idea of this press release, but I wonder if maybe a copy of this shouldn't also go to the Chamber and then also to the M B A and then the Moore Business Association?
Okay.
I think, you know, I think every way we can use to get businesses familiar with it.
Great.
Is there a business meeting for businesses at the Chamber?
And the Moore Business Association meets.
Weekly.
Weekly, every Wednesday morning, I think they meet at a Moore Friday.
That might be a good place to start.
It would, and they'd like to hear from you, I'm sure.
Yes, absolutely.
Dave Hunstead is the contact.
Who?
Dave Hunstead.
Yeah.
You might, so, to enroll, you can do it at either of your offices or online.
Great.
And it might be good sometime in the future, once you get things rolling, to have, you know, like in each of the service clubs, to have a sign-up day or something. Because some people don't want to come to the courthouse, and some don't.
Yeah, we did the manual sign-up because some are up there in age and.
Right.
Don't know how to turn on a computer, so we did the paper method, yeah.
One last question. Will we be, at some point then, keeping a list of all of these businesses, or, you know, so if they ask, what business participate?
There's a, on the link, it'll show the participating businesses.
Oh, it does, oh, okay.
So, when, it'll take about, once a veteran signs up, it takes about two weeks, and they'll get, you know, like a driver's license card, and then the Fiddler Company sends it to our office, and we will send it out. And at that time, then we'll send a letter thanking them for enrolling, and also then an update on the businesses that are participating. And the businesses actually get, let's see which one, a card like this, and they can put that by their till or wherever they choose to, as to that they participate in.
Yeah, and when you get businesses, come back, and we'll give them some recognition here, too, so.
And I signed up, I'll be, I'm the guinea pig, so we'll see how the process goes.
Great.
Good enough.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Julie. Good work. Okay. Julie's not here yet, so why don't we do our committee reports? We've got a little time. Oh, Julie, come on up, Julie, we're ready for you. Good timing.
Sorry I made you wait.
Yeah, it was all in five seconds, I'd say, so.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to request a replacement for full-time male corrections officer. They'll be leaving to go to Glendon P D, so we're less going to the P D. This is a mandated staff position, and it's in the budget. There'll be little to no cost savings because it's at the end of the year here, and the person that's relieving was just hired within this year, so. But on a positive note, the last month when I came here for my temporary full-time position, that officer actually has deployment papers changed, so we got to keep him, so that's a good thing, yeah. So, I'm requesting a full-time male.
It will, it will give you a little bit of a budget benefit, not this year, but next year, because you would have budgeted that higher.
Yeah, about, yeah, two percent, it's minor.
Well.
Yeah. It's something, yes.
Every little bit helps.
Every little bit helps, yes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh same sign, motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thanks, Julie. When?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thursday, October twenty-ninth, Early Childhood Mental Health Network meeting, and this is the second one of those, we held in Barnesville. Went over and discussed trends in children's mental health, some of these were and are. Team approach, that is coordination of care among providers going into the home. Transportation, which is always a big issue. Drug abuse with pregnancy. Foster care and adoptive care. Incorporating families with the services available, particularly the importance of home visits and forming provider-family relationships. Agency reports from Children's Consultation Network, Solutions, Lakeland Mental Health, White Earth Tribal Mental Health Program, from the West Central Initiative, Lake Agassy West Central Cooperative, and from Village Family Services. Another item brought forward was the increasing use of alcohol in grade school students, and that is something that will be discussed and talked about down the line even more. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Frank.
Wednesday, went out to the Highway Department, we had a meeting, I don't know, it was a Highway Tracking Meeting, whatever you want to call it, I guess, where Eglin Township, Cromwell Township, and Highland Grove Township were representative, and they were concerned, or they wanted to know, so we could get some information on that building we're building out of the landfill.
Well, we're considering.
Considering, right, and I mean, and they got word of that, just wanted to find out what was involved in that, and all three of the townships that were there were very for what we're planning, you know, they all thought it was a great idea with this build in combination with the landfill and with the Highway Department, so they were all thought it was a great idea. If that goes through, there would be a realignment of some of the districts for the winter and summer, great.
The service districts?
Yes. So, and then, like I say, everything, everything, meeting went well, and they were all in agreement with what we're doing. Friday, I guess along with Grant and Kevin, we're at District Four meeting down in Fergus Falls. I guess what I thought, when the counties gave their reports, what I was interested in, you know, that's all the health plans, you know, people's health plans, went up from twelve percent to twenty-nine percent, you know, that was a pretty big spread there, you know, with different counties, I mean, and then we're talking about contract negotiations, I mean, some of them were given zero, one, I think that one county said they're giving no, no raise at all this year to their employees, you know, they range from zero to two percent, you know, over a three-year period, you know. Levy amounts is pretty much anywhere from minus one percent to nine percent, and I guess we're towards the lower part of that, you know, right now where we're sitting, so. Talked a little bit about audits, said you don't have to sign a contract for a three-year, three-year contract. Another interesting thing was the new formula they're trying to get through was for the County Program Aid, they're trying to add forty million dollars to the, to the, to the plan where the C P A would go up, and there's a resolution, I think they want us to adopt, and I think the three major projects that they want to work on is the County Program Aid, transportation, and mental health, so.
Thank you, Frank.
I didn't have any committee reports last week.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yes, I had, last week I had, on Wednesday, the Prairie Lakes meeting, and that was pretty much just an update on the current facilities and the issues that still seem to plague that new boiler system that's there. And we talked a little bit about the waste desidation plan, public hearings, for ours, we're going to have one here on November seventeenth. And then, as Frank mentioned, on Friday, I was at the District Four meeting, and the, that resolution on that forty million dollar change in formula, that's, AMC is going to suggest a resolution for us coming forward probably in the next couple of weeks to work on that, but it was certainly, it would be a really good benefit to Clay County. Had that been in place, we would have seen an additional four hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in Program Aid.
For twenty-four, yeah.
Yeah, so, which is, which is significant, and that would certainly help. It was interesting, I was sitting next to Barry from Becker County and then Brian, and they had, they'd gone through all of these issues that are important to all the different committees, like transportation, or public safety, and general government, and health and human services, and they asked for five, the five most important topics, and it was interesting that myself and Brian and Barry all had chosen the same three, and the three that we had chosen were three of the five.
You could add me to that, Wes.
Right, yeah, yeah, well, you were just sitting away from us.
Yeah, I know, I was going to say, I chose those three, too.
Yeah, so, it was, it was really, it was really good to see that there was, you know, really uniformity amongst all of the counties in terms of what are the major issues that we as counties should be working, that isn't to say the others don't deserve attention at the state level, but these were the real priority ones that went on, so that was, that was a good meeting, I was glad, glad to be there for that. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
And I had District Four, which has been reported on, and the Prairie Lakes sell in waste, which has been reported on, so that's it for me. Darren, you have anything for us?
Just a couple things, open enrollment went very well, finished on Friday.
Is there anybody who didn't sign up in time?
I won't, I won't point anybody out. But, out of the three hundred and eighty-five packets we sent out, only nine did not come back, so.
Nine?
Yeah. We have Dave Cornell training going on today, it's the first day of a three-day training for supervisors, we've got about fifteen people attending that. There's a media sale today down in the basement of the courthouse for books, DVDs, movies, all that stuff, and we've met with two of the unions on their contract negotiations, the lieutenants and detox, we still have to meet with one more for the juvenile correctional, juvenile counselors, and then we'll be bringing that to the board for discussion, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, well, we've got a couple of public hearings, I suppose we have to wait till their schedule, so we'll take a break for about ten minutes and come back and do a public hearings.
I'll take one minute each.
Back to order, and we have a public hearing, modification of language in Clay County's tobacco sales ordinance for compliance with Minnesota state law.
Mr. Chair, I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to open the public hearing, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh same sign, motion carries, okay.
Okay, I'll introduce Jason McCoy, who works with our tobacco control things with Partnership for Health, so he'll provide the information.
Good morning.
Good morning, nice to meet everybody. I've been here for about eight months, so it's nice to get a chance to come over and see everybody. Got like a real brief presentation, the first one is incredibly brief. Okay, so for this first. Six, seven, yeah. There we go, okay. So, as you just said, we're talking about updating the tobacco sales ordinance, this, first of all, whenever I met with Brian, what he said to make sure to emphasize this has nothing to do with our employee policy, we're not readdressing that, that's taken care of. This is our actual tobacco licenses throughout Clay County, the ones that we actually do here through the county, so it doesn't affect the cities like Morehead and Barnesville, where they actually have their own tobacco sales licenses. This would just cover the cities where we actually do the enforcement and actually send out the licenses. And really, it's just a very, very small upgrade, you guys know who I am, that we're doing, and that is, in two thousand and ten, there was the Tobacco Sales and Modification Act, got added to the Clean Indoor Air here in Minnesota. In two thousand and fourteen, there was, they didn't give it a name, but they addressed, the state legislature addressed e-cigarettes and passed some, some law, but didn't go very far with it at this point in time. And then here, January first of two thousand and fifteen, they passed one more addition in which it's required for all tobacco licensees, if you're going to sell the e-liquids, which I have some examples I'll pass around, that you have to have a, them in child-resistant packaging, and be able to prove that when compliance checks are done. So, that's what we have at the Minnesota State right now. When they addressed e-cigarettes, they said that if you're, as a county or a city, if you're going to have tobacco sales licensing, that you should have that definition added to your tobacco, to your tobacco sales ordinance. And so that, in this first part of the public hearing, that is literally what, the only thing we're addressing, is we're adding the definitions of what constitutes an electronic delivery device, and is specifically named that way because there are so many different names for them, and then going throughout the ordinance and just adding that, so, for an example, if there's a penalty and it says if you sell to a minor a tobacco product, it also says electronic delivery device product. And that is the sum and whole of the first proposal to just update our ordinance, just that way we're in compliance with Minnesota state law.
Thank you.
And that's the first part.
Kevin? Are there a lot of products right now that do not have the child safety packaging?
The liquids?
The liquids.
Well, all of the other products don't have child safety, and it's definitely a concern. Here in Minnesota, last year, poisonings from nicotine skyrocketed up, we went from having like five or less a year to seventy-five in one year. Thankfully, none, and this is five years or under children, thankfully, none of them, there was no deaths, but there was some very severe nicotine poisoning. And the reason why, I guess I can just go ahead and pass them around here, I will, as I pass these around, I'll say, if you want to, like, open to smell, that's okay, just make sure you don't get it on your skin, because it literally can absorb through your skin, but they look like this, and they come in an amazing amount of flavors. There's seven thousand, seven hundred, a lot of them are very children-friendly, and what happens, because I, I don't believe that most adults are going to just leave them sitting around hoping that a child gets into them, but you set it down, you know, you've refilled your e-cigarette, which is what these are for, and if a child gets a hold of it, it smells good, it tastes good, and there's an unknown amount of nicotine, and if you're five years or less, you probably don't even know what nicotine is, and before you know it, you've drank the stuff, and all it takes is seventy-five milliliters of nicotine to actually kill a child. Not much more than that will actually kill a grown man.
So, just to, excuse me.
Yeah.
There are fifteen milliliters in a piece, so if you have three sitting around, and these are very easy to open, because my children can open these, and I can open these, that's the toxicity.
Right, and that depends on the percentage in them as well. It's very, there's no regulation, actually, you know what, let me just move through this, and that way it'll make it easier to do both of them. The important part here, I think everybody in America knows that the number one cause of death and disease is still tobacco. It's still happening. Smoking rates are dropping very drastically, and that's great, but there's still enough, and second-hand smoke is still happening, and you can see the numbers here, I mean, there's almost three billion in healthcare costs just in Minnesota from smoking-related disease. Seven thousand kids are becoming daily smokers in Minnesota. The one that's that, that blew my mind, there's a nine hundred percent increase in e-sig use amongst high school and middle school students. They're going like crazy. I've talked to, just here locally, I've talked to Morehead High's principal, and he said every week they're confiscating either the devices or the juice from students, it's just happening, and that goes throughout all the schools that we have. Right now, it's incredibly, it's become the counterculture thing to do. So, this was just a reminder, we updated our sales in two thousand and twelve, Morehead updated in two thousand and thirteen. Dilworth just passed, I don't know if you guys have seen that or not, but they just passed updating their tobacco sales ordinance to include these, and they passed an electronic delivery device ordinance as well, as I'm proposing, to cover the use of e-cigarettes. And that just happened last month. Here's where we talked about, oh, yeah, we're adding child-resistant packaging and electronic delivery devices as definitions. And then this is, this is what we end up looking at, whenever we go to a convenience store, there's an incredible amount of different flavorings that have been added to tobacco. It's been proven that they actually make them more addictive, it's been proven that kids will see the flavorings and it will trap them more, and as you can see, I mean, everything looks very, very similar. You have, in this entire picture, there's one e-cigarette right up there in the top, right next to the Mentos, and it kind of looks like a pen light, which I can show a couple of different, this is like what one looks like, they kind of look like a traditional But then you can get, you can get ones that look like, like this, which has.
Are you selling this stuff to people?
Right, exactly, you know, I walk into some places to try to put on my, put on my dog and pony show, right, and there's.
Is that the place you went?
Yes, and they go up, I mean, so, you know, for the, for the non-kid who likes to go hunting, you can get your camouflage, you know, so that the deer don't know that you're baby. So, and there's an incredible amount, oops, here's what they started off looking like, they look like regular cigarettes, the one I'm passing around looks like that, but then they started making them look like, like Hello Kitty, and, and things like this, you know, Superman and Batman, they obviously use nicotine products. This is what you see, if you were to visit, we have one hookah shop left here in Morehead, and if you went in, this, you would see rows and rows, like I said, seven thousand, seven hundred unique flavors, that's before they start mixing and matching all of these things. There's no regulation on them from the FDA yet, it's moving forward, hopefully we'll see that real soon, but as of right now, you could literally go, order these chemicals and mix them in your garage, and then sell them to people, and it's buyer beware. They can say there's this much nicotine or no nicotine, we've found nicotine in all of them, and on top of that, because there's no regulation for them, they, we just don't know everything, they don't have to tell us everything yet. So, right now, I talked about the Minnesota Poison Control Study, that's been done, there's no restrictions on advertising, they advertise straight to youth, like they used to do back in the heyday of the tobacco, in fact, they're using a lot of the exact same kind of commercials. What we do know, and these have just been backed up by the Center for Disease Control and the American College of Pediatrics, they came out and stated that they know for a fact that there's toxic chemicals in these, in these juices, besides the nicotine, you have a lot of the arsenic and various heavy metals, the carcinogens, right, the things that are going to cause cancer. They do exist in the second hand, they call them side-stream vapor or side-stream aerosol instead of second-hand smoke to try to distance themselves, but we know that in the second hand, there are carcinogens, they are, they're absolutely not safe. They try to call it vapor because they want you to think that it's a water-based product, but there's absolutely no water in it. So, it's, it becomes a, yeah, basically, there's, they don't have to have truth in advertising yet. So, what I'm proposing, I talked about the first one, the second one can be summed up in one sentence, and it's just don't vape, which is their terminology, where you don't smoke. It adds e-cigarettes to Minnesota Clean Indoor Air, and just says, if you're not supposed to smoke here, for an example, in the library, or the bar, or the restaurant, don't use your e-cigarettes. A lot of people don't even know that they can't, or that they could currently use them, and so they don't push it, I don't know if that's a product of being just Minnesota nice or not, but this actually makes that as an ordinance. And as I said, they're going up incredibly fast, from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and fourteen. From 2011 to 2014, it's been 900% jump. There's a huge awareness. Right now, 13% of Minnesota high school students have used them in the last 30 days, that admit to using them. They use the new media program called Snapchat to blow the biggest vapor cloud and compare it to each other. We've intercepted pictures of them, taking pictures of themselves using them in the back of classrooms, because the difference between a cigarette and an e-cigarette is unlike a cigarette that if you dropped it in your pocket, you'd set yourself on fire. With these, even though they heat up, you can, they don't heat up on the outside, so you can just slip them up your sleeve, or down your shirt, or whatever, to try to hide them. And so, that's why we're having a lot of problems. They're also, they've been billed as a cessation device, and the FDA has definitely said they're not, as has the CDC and various other organizations. There's no proof whatsoever that they are actually a cessation device. In fact, they tend to bring those who didn't smoke before into nicotine addiction, where they will then find it easier to get a hold of cigarettes or some other form of tobacco and use that. So, they actually become a gateway. One of the other things we've seen quite often is, here in Minnesota, is they're using a lot of the synthetic marijuana. They can actually melt the stuff straight into the juice and use them that way.
But there's a will as a way.
Exactly, right. So, as I've already said, they think it's cool, they're using them. It's because they can use them at different places, they can order them straight off the internet, and it becomes a, it's renormalizing smoking, is what it's doing for them. And so, here's what Minnesota covers right now. If you're, you're not supposed to use them until you're 18, and then the only places that they're currently covered are hospitals, daycare facilities, while the kids are there, and buildings owned by the state, Minnesota State Colleges, anything by the Commission of Human Services. So, there's not a lot of places used. Right now, literally, you can, as I said, you can walk through the grocery store, or the library, the bar, the restaurant, wherever, and use these. And as I said, this is, in a sentence, I could have probably just said that, is "Don't vape where you don't smoke." There is possibility for a setback. I did not choose to include that in here. Morehead did adopt North Dakota's law, verbatim, which gave them a 20-foot setback. However, that's only there for e-cigarettes, that's not there for regular cigarettes. So that, to me, sets up a legal possibility where a smoker could say, wait, I can smoke, or, sorry, someone with an e-cigarette could say, I can't be within 20 feet of a public interest, but you can smoke right outside the door? And that could cause a problem, so I didn't choose to tackle putting some kind of a setback in there. I tried to make this as simple as possible. And that's really what I have. Any questions?
Questions?
So, Morehead, the city of Morehead has passed...
Yes.
...the e-sig language that's...
Absolutely, as has Dilworth.
Okay. The issue with the setback, we don't have it in ours?
Right.
So, how does, how does, if we pass ours without that setback, how does that, what does that do with Morehead's? Does Morehead supersede ours for their own...
Yes, for their city, yes.
Right. Does each city have to pass this, or how? Because I saw on the slide before, you hit that counties were covered under this.
Right. As a county, the only cities that need to pass their own is if they choose to both license and do their own compliance checks, so therefore, they'd be enforcing their own. That would be the only time a city would have to have their own.
Well, if we as a county adopt something, does that apply to the whole county then? Or who's applied, who adopt this, who does that apply to in the county?
It would be everyone in the county except for Morehead, Dilworth, and Barnesville. That would be the only three cities that would need their own, which Morehead and Dilworth do, and I'm working with Barnesville now.
Mr. Chair, if I could, maybe I can clarify some of this. Counties are allowed to pass local ordinances on public health matters, these are public health matters. They apply to everybody in the county, including municipalities, unless the municipality has done something that is more restrictive. So, the city or town can adopt an ordinance in the same public health matters that are, they must not conflict with or be less restrictive than the ordinance. So, I guess if someone were to find a conflict, we're not aware of a conflict, but, or if the city wanted to pass something less restrictive, then there would be, then this would supersede it. But this board can pass this ordinance, applies to everybody in the county, municipalities can be more restrictive on top of what they wish.
Well, but wouldn't the fact that, now that the city, then, referring to City Morehead, has a 20-foot setback and we don't, is ours more restrictive?
I would say theirs is more restrictive, because they're restricting additional places where these cannot be used.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that...
Can you go back one slide?
Absolutely. Oops, sorry. There we go.
What is the county, a building's owned and operated by the state, home rule charges, county, country? So we really have that, that's already in our county, isn't it, or it's just in our building right now?
Just in our buildings, that Clay County personally owns, well, as a corporation owns.
And that's defined in state law.
Right.
But now we're talking about private business.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Move to close the public hearing.
Do we have anybody else that wants to speak, Kevin?
No. Have a motion to close?
Second.
Second. Motion in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. What are the board's wishes on this item?
I'll move to approve the resolution as presented.
All second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Second public hearing, enactment of ordinance regulating the use of electronic delivery devices per Minnesota Freedom to Breathe Act. Have a motion to close, or open for a public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's nice to meet everybody.
Do we have more?
I think you, in your presentation, you covered both items.
I did cover both items, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, we should have a separate motion, shouldn't we, for the...
Yes.
For each one, okay.
So...
Well, we've got a, we've got the hearing.
I'd move to close.
Is there any more discussion on this? Okay, so we've got a motion to close the hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries.
So, move to the second one.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Enactment of the ordinance regulating the use of electronic delivery devices per Minnesota Freedom to Breathe Act.
Slapping.
Motion in a second, any further discussion?
Just a question, do the, under violations and penalties, has anything changed there?
As far as I understand...
From the original language?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, honored guest.
Okay, now discuss issues with Carson Olet. Come on up, Carson. You're Carson, I presume?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Field representative for Senator Al Franken.
Carson, could you say your last name?
I just call it, say Olet. Simply, yeah. So, yes, I am Senator Franken's new Northwest Minnesota Field Representative. I don't know if you've done any work, or did any work with Val Grabza. She was based out of Grand Forks and covered the same territory, but she is now retired, and I have replaced her. Graduated from Concordia College this May, started this job a couple weeks later, and have been on the job for almost six months.
Welcome.
Here to talk about anything that you may find have...
So are you working out of Morehead?
Yep, based here in Morehead. We got office space, kind of, still in the process of getting it open for business on Center Avenue, near the Taco John's downtown.
Questions for Carson? It's gonna be a pretty easy morning on you, so...
It's gotta be something. Have you, go ahead. I'm just wondering, like, transportation, surface transportation, infrastructure kind of issues that you may have, that's unique to Clay County or not, but Clay County definitely may impact for, like, improvements for transportation infrastructure would be beneficial for the county? Anything you want to talk about?
I know a major issue that I'm sure you hear constantly is how train traffic and how those loads impact the public safety issues, and Morehead is intricately intertwined with those railroads, and there are a lot of volatile liquids that are heading through, so that continues to be a huge concern for us as we try to keep everyone safe.
Yeah, I know, I know in the past, too, we've, we've worked with Senator Franken and others on transportation projects that have, that can have like a regional impact to the area, and I know, for example, a significant portion of what we did on, I believe it was County 52, or Highway 52, it really, we were really able to advance that project, you know, with the assistance of some of the programs within the transportation bill. I know John Everett's here, and John will remember, too, that that's, that area was his district, as well as Jenny's now, that we were, I mean, it was, it was such an expensive project, and to, for us to do it without any federal or state help, it would have taken us years and years and years to accomplish. And of course, we made a good case, and we think we rightfully should have that help from the federal government as well, because after all, our taxes go to them as well, so... So, transportation's a big issue. I think there's a lot of areas that, that, and maybe now that we've met you, we can kind of put together some more things for you in detail. I know there's issues with child protection, health and human service areas that are really becoming costly to the counties, and those issues, there's a lot of mandates that actually come from the federal government as well as the state, and we just don't feel that all the burden of paying for them all should fall strictly on the counties, so, and they're just escalating, they're on the rise.
And mental health issues, that we're dealing with with the jails and what's going on.
Certainly, those are no new issues to you, I'm sure, but, but they're really important issues to us from a county standpoint, so...
Right.
But I, you know, I think, you know, Mr. Chairman, I know that we usually have, and Brian usually puts together for us a legislative breakfast that we have, and it's typically, I think it's like early March that we have, and I think it would be really good to maybe invite you to that, and, and at that time, that's when we can, we really put together detailed presentations for both our state legislatures, and then it might be a good time for you to be there as well, and we'll make sure that you're on that invitation list to come.
Okay.
And it gives our, our staff the ability to come and make their presentations to you. They're the boots on the ground, so to speak, and they know the ins and outs of it very good, that you'd probably be beneficial hearing that, so...
I see you got on here the farm bill, you know. What can you tell me about the farm bill? Is it gonna be good for farmers here?
So, news recently that I know of is that the budget deal that has been working, that's been kind of discussed, and is, looks hopeful that we will all reach it, and it'll be all passed through without any problems, will reinstate $3 billion to the crop insurance program that was initially taken out during the deal. So they crafted this deal, and Upper Midwest and rural state senators and congresspeople said, would, why did you cut $3 billion from crop insurance? And there was enough renegotiating that that was put back in. So, with this new deal, it won't change anything relating to the farm bill or crop insurance, things like that, like originally it was going to a few weeks ago, a couple weeks ago. So that's the newest change, but it won't actually change. And so that's good for anyone who uses that program. But as for renegotiating things that are in the farm bill, that was passed in 2014, it's not really possible, because you can't pick the farm bill apart and try to boost things that, like, we see improvements at our office, with Senator Klobuchar and Senator Franken, and it'd be really nice to just go in and tweak a couple little things in there to improve the state for Minnesota dairy farmers or things like that. But to do that, you then have to open up the entire farm bill, which then opens up SNAP funding, and then it becomes a really heated debate in Congress, and it's difficult to get through it all in the first place. So, that's the issues that we run into with the farm bill. The way it is, it's just kind of, you have to wait for the next one, which will probably go into writing soon, and that would be more on the shoulders of Congressman Peterson and Senator Klobuchar, because they're on their respective ag committees, as that new bill gets written in the next couple of years for re-debate again, in probably 2018.
When you say you can't pick and choose some of the items, how did they pick the crop insurance thing then?
I'm not sure exactly. I think it was a funding issue, and that they're able to, I'm not sure if the appropriations for that is outside of the farm bill. That's a, like a procedural issue or question that I don't know the answer to, and it's a really good question, and I will ask in my office how that happened.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin?
I just want to, you know, you told us that you replaced Valerie, and I just want to send out a congratulations to her on her retirement, and maybe a thank you to her as well. And Grant knows this, and I know, going back to Commissioner Everett when he was here, after the 2009 flood, Senator Franken, he was here, and he was here a lot. You know, we even had a Sunday evening meeting with him, taking the time to, I know he was mayor of Oxland, and I, Grant, I believe you're there, and I think John might have spent more time, but all of those things, and his willingness to help our communities on these areas that could have had devastating impacts were very much appreciated, so, but I, and I say that because Val was really, went to bat for us in making sure that she, he knew about this and could be here, so I want to thank her for that, so...
Anything else? Anything else for us, Carson?
Thank you.
No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you, Mark.
We'll be seeing you.
Nice meeting you.
Yeah, you too.
Anything else coming for the board this morning? John, you got anything for us this morning?
You guys are quick.
Yeah.
Were you here for the hearings?
No, I'm just here to...
Say hi?
We're still here.
Yeah, we are. Anything else this morning? You mean nothing? Or a dear?